Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting of July 13th, 2021. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we have on the agenda tonight is the rescinding of old Forge Drive subdivision, and that is still in the process. That wasn't a public hearing, so we're just going to pass on that tonight. And we'll hear that at some other time. We do have an A&R plan tonight, one of two, and this one, this first plan is off Montello Street, map 20, lot 14, Route 44 Development LLC, GAF Engineering. This is for discussion and possible vote. We have someone here to represent this plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bob Rogers from GAF Engineering. So this plan does not create any new building lots. What it does is it takes an existing piece of land owned by Julie Kuhn. The existing piece of land is, it looks like it's about a third of it is in Plimpton, and two-thirds of it is in Carver. And so what this plan is doing is it's using the town line to create two separate parcels, just like it is now on the assessors. So there's a Plimpton map and lot, there's a Carver map and lot, but the deed, the deed is all one piece. So once we have this plan endorsed by both Carver and Plimpton, the Carver piece will be conveyed to Route 44 Development and combined with their adjacent land, and so then, you know, it would just be part of whatever overall future development that they do. And, you know, the Plimpton piece will stay in Plimpton. They just, they didn't want to buy the whole piece of land, they only wanted to purchase what's in Carver. So now this plan would be referred to in a deed.
All right, it looks fine with me. Are there any questions by any of the Planning Board Seems to be pretty straightforward. If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan.
I'll make motion to endorse the plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by John Gatski, second by Carney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor. And so we're going to have, no, we don't, it'll just be the four of us, they're not rich, even though Kevin's out. Okay. Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So would we have to pick up the MYLAR, Jim, later in the week?
Want to sign that now, or at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, let's do the MYLAR. We get the MYLAR, the way in the...
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Hey, Kevin.
How's it going, Carney? And so you want to do this side right here.
So the first thing we had tonight was signed in the MYLAR.
Okay.
Is that...
For the A&R?
Yeah, the A&R, and they're just combining that, they're going to combine that with the Route 44 Development.
Oh, okay.
Well, you weren't here for the vote, were you?
He wasn't here for the vote, so we can't really sign that.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so it just, yeah, just...
What about...
Rich Canley vote on special permit.
All right.
I'm getting that one right behind you.
Thank you.
Oh, geez.
Steal that. So then we have the four, we need to sign those plans where on you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is, we're going to take number three, and we're going to combine that with number seven as we go. So I'm going to skip number three right now, and we're going to go to the, go to number four, which is a public hearing. And this public hearing is the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review, and this is for a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. And this is going to, this is on 223 Meadow Street, and it's been asked by the applicant that we continue this to July 27th meeting. So is that all that information correct, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. I hate to give out the wrong information, so I just had to check. So entertain a motion to continue application of Ironwood Renewable LLC at 223 Meadow Street to 7:00, July 27th.
Can you let me show you so makes that motion?
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
So John Gatski, second. All right, further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was unanimous. So that'll be continued 7:00, July 27th. So number five is on the application of Miriam Gorey, and that was on 149 South Main Street in Carver, and this to operate a hobby commercial kennel. And so it's been requested by the applicant that we continue this to July 27th at 7:00. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this.
Carney Liashay so makes a motion to continue this?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Carney, second by Ellen Sedillo. Further discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 So that's unanimous. So we get on to number six. On the application of, this is continuation of public hearing on the application of David Mulcahy, 1929 Development Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review under Section 2230, 2330, 3100, 40300, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw, and this is located at 157 North Main Street in Carver. It's for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot Craftsman-Traysman Building in auto-operated deer tick and mosquito control business on a highway, in a highway commercial district. And this is, was continued from June 22nd. So I see that we have some people here. If you give us your names and...
Yep. Scott Finar with Grady Consulting.
David Mulcahy, 1929 Development.
So I believe we're all familiar with this project here. We've been continuing it a few times. I think the last time was just to write up some of the special conditions for this project.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've all been out there for the site walk. We have some peer review comments that have been addressed. So if there are any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Do you have any comics, comments to make, Jim, about this? I saw that there was comments by Building Inspector Jim Vanda on this.
Right, so one of the comments from Preston O'Neil had to deal with, with the two principal buildings on the property requires a 30-foot separation between the two buildings. Fire Department looked at that and said they were okay with that, but defer to the building official to, because it would require a condition to address the fire, the materials used on the buildings to prevent fire.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'll do is refer to, yeah, so the building separation concerns is valid and recommended condition that the applicant shall provide a building construction plan wet stamped by an engineer stating the following. The fire separation distance will be mitigated through the application of fire-resistant building materials that allow in the decrease of fire separation distances for this project according to IBC 2015 Building Code. So before, when they come before the, the condition is that before they come before the building commissioner, they'll have a plan, you know, for the building where, you know, they'll, they'll use fire-resistant building materials on the buildings themselves in order to make that 24 setback, 24-foot separation work. But the fire department was okay with that, as well as the building officials, as long as the, that condition is addressed.
Okay.
I haven't seen a list of conditions for, for this project. Did we have any?
It was in your packet that I had on top there.
I know that you gave us...
There's a packet on top of your spots there.
Yeah, there is, there is a sheet to... Yeah, I don't know if you originally gave that to me or not. No, I guess not. Yeah, so, okay, you, this is something that you just did today, okay. All right, are there any questions? What I'd like to do is get, see if there's any questions from the plan, of the board members, and once those are answered, then we'll see if there's anybody out in the audience that has any questions. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll, then we can go to the conditions. But you can, yeah, if you have any questions about the conditions, we can do that now too, I suppose.
Jim, do you have a copy of the conditions that we could take a look at?
Actually, you want to read those conditions? Well, maybe before you do that, maybe we could close the public hearing. Let me just see if there's anybody out in the audience. Is there anybody here that has any questions or comments about this project? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Carney Liashay makes a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
And Ellen Sedillo, seconds. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous to close the public hearing. All right. So, yeah, so maybe if you want to read the conditions, Jim?
Sure. All right, so, condition one, the applicant shall continue to adhere to the conditions found in the planning board decision dated July 9, 2019, and certified no appeal on July 31, 2021. Actually, that should be 2019. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision is registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning board and permitting office. Condition three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a building construction plan to the building official wet stamped by an engineer stating the following. The fire separation distance will be mitigated through the application of fire-resistant building materials that allow in the decrease of fire separation distances for this project according to the IBC 2015 Building Code. Condition four, the existing building was approved for storage of O'Dea's product. All storage, loading and unloading of O'Dea products shall remain in the existing garage as conditioned in the planning board decision dated July 9, 2019. The use of the new building shall be limited to storage of vehicles, equipment, and shop supplies. No vehicle maintenance has occur in the building, and that was referring to the new building. Number five, in event of a spill or injury at the site, the applicant shall inform the Board of Health, Fire Department, and the planning board immediately or within a reasonable timeframe not to exceed 24 hours. Condition six, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Condition seven, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sedimentation, and soil erosion control shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. Then condition number eight, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, A, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid; B, as built plans, shall be submitted to the towns engineer and planning department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection; and C, in accordance with Section 3180 compliance of the Carver zoning bylaws, the towns engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions.
All right. Any questions or comments about the conditions? Mr. Shea, are you still, need some time to look at it, or?
No, no, I'm ready.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for site plan and special, special permit approval of the application of David Mulcahy on 157 North Main Street with conditions as written.
Carney Liashay so makes that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Kevin Robinson. Further discussion? Seeing none. Does, see, okay, so Rich doesn't, it's just the regular members here that, oh, okay. All right. Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that was unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, so, um, so do you want, just to ask Jim a question, do we do the A&R plan first for Galehead Development on Zero Meadow Street?
Yes, I think we do that first, and then...
Okay, and then we'll go on?
Um...
So, so skipping back up to, because these two are really part of the same project, so we'll go back up to the A&R plans, which was number three on our agenda, which was the A&R of Zero Meadow Street and One Cobblestone Lane. Give us your names and where you come from, please.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Wagner. I'm a senior environmental scientist with VHB. Go ahead.
I'm Cameron Knowles, and I'm with Galehead Development.
So we're here to discuss the, the site on Cobblestone Lane, and as you noted, we are here for the A&R plan, which really is, is pretty simple. The, the plan itself is basically a consolidation of the two lots that were encompassing the owner's property, which is sort of coming from Meadow Street down this very, you know, long, skinny portion of the driveway to the owner's site, and then combining it with the cranberry bogs in the back. And for those of you who are at the site walk that we did on the 28th, we talked a little bit about that. And so we're really just proposing to eliminate the lot line, which I've colored here in tan on the plan. That line is coming out, so these will all become one lot. That would give the frontage, the required frontage to the, to the project proposed in the, in the bogs in the back. There are no other changes proposed in the plan, no changes to the lot lines at all.
Is this family?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Just us, yeah.
Oh, no, I thought, no, not me.
No? Okay, any questions by any of the Planning Board members? I mean, we, I remember when we, we went for the site walk, we talked about the, the need for frontage for the solar field, and in order to create the frontage, and I think this was brought up at our last meeting, in order to create the frontage, you had to combine the two lots, because the two houses at the end of Cobblestone Lane, their frontage comes from what, what, along Cobblestone Lane, and so that's why you're doing this tonight.
Right.
Okay. Any questions by any of the members?
I just have a couple here. Now, Cobblestone Lane is a privately owned, it's part of the property, is that correct?
It is.
And your frontage comes from the 137 feet of town-owned roadway at the front?
The frontage, I believe, comes from along, along Cobblestone.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's, that's a privately owned, that's, that's owned by the applicant, if I'm not mistaken. It's not a town road.
A town-approved road.
Oh, it is? I thought only the first 150 feet of it was...
150 feet, yeah.
It just says it's 137, that's why I was, I was curious, and I'm just asking questions, you know, because I know frontage was an issue on this. So that the whole length of Cobblestone Lane, almost except for the very last piece that's, that's, doesn't have any lines on it, is, is privately owned, correct?
Well, there...
Yeah, there is no distance on the line along Cobblestone Lane unless I, oh, yeah, it's 1,000...
141 feet.
Of, that's private, that's owned by the applicant. Only, only the...
But that's... This one is 137, here, or 137 and a half, or why is 150 in this section?
Right, there's also this 20-foot portion on the...
Okay, yep.
In the Y.
Okay, yep. I see, I, well, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, because this was already approved, this road was already approved as front, frontage from another planning board.
Right, no, I wasn't, I was just asking a question, where, where were you getting it, and it looks like you have 157 feet of frontage.
Do you have anything else, Carney, is that...
Um, no, did we get all the, I'm sorry, did we get all the information from the peer review? Have we got the signed lease and...
Well, we'll, we'll go on to that on this, on the second part...
Right, right.
...of approval of solar field. This is just, this is the A&R.
Yes, so I'm getting ahead of myself, so...
Yeah, so if you, so I'll entertain a motion to, let's see, endorse the A&R plan for, and is this one, so it'll be One Cobblestone Lane, Zero Meadow Street, and One Cobblestone Lane? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, second that motion.
John Gatski made it, the motion. Carney Liashay, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, so we got the A&R Okay, so now we'll go on to, and this is a continuation of a former meeting on the application of Galehead Development requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 2230, 3100, 3700, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Zero Meadow Street, which is assesses map 82, lot 1A, 1-2, and 1-3 to allow the construction in operation of an approximately 1 megawatt large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. This property is located in a residential agricultural district, and this was continued from June 22nd. All right, so we did go out on a site visit. What I saw out there is, is cranberry bogs, and one cranberry bog was going to be taken, see, there was two cranberry bogs there, one was going to be taken off of production.
Right. They're, they're shown on here, labeled Bog 1, 2, 3. There's actually a collection of them, Bog, up to, we've numbered them up to Bog 5. Bog 3 is the one that's going to be taken out of production and proposed for the facility. It's the one basically on the, on the south. You can see the limits of the solar development, sort of juxtaposed on the plan here. And that's, the, the entirety of the, of the development would be within that, within the bog.
Okay. And I think we went out there and we saw how remote this place was. I mean, there wasn't, there was only two houses at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
And so they were the only ones that had a view of this solar array, and now this was, and so did it meet this, so what do we do with the, the abutter of the property, the second person?
So we, so we have the abutter, we have the abutter notifications for the immediate abutters, and when we were out there on the site walk, we did discuss screening, and the board felt that there was not the need for screening with the, with the surrounding abutters. And the, the only views that we have of the house are the two, or, excuse me, of the project are the two houses that are on the, that are on the site now.
And one was the property owner?
Correct.
And the other was the...
The property owner's son.
Son, okay.
Right.
And, okay, so, and they were fine with the...
Right, we have...
The views of the, of the project.
That's right. And then the immediate abutters, we have, we have obtained the waivers for.
Okay.
Well, who do you consider to be immediate abutters?
So that would be everyone that's basically affected within the, the view shed of the project, which was the abutter to the southeast, the abutter, and the abutter to the south. The abutter to the immediate east is the same, is the same, we have, we have, it's one, it's one owner.
And the abutters...
So it did not include, for example, abutters across the town line, across the river, to the north of the property, hundreds of feet away. There was, I believe, a letter that was submitted from, counsel from, from Galehead to the town council on this opinion of what constitutes an abutter requiring, requiring this waiver, making the case that...
Just let me interrupt. More importantly, we got a letter from our legal counsel...
Right.
That, you know, the opinion was, is that it was only where the immediate, she, it was the word, impact was. So for example, if you're on this side and you're getting a waiver, or, you know, the setback is being reduced over here, then the abutter on this side would have to be the one to give the waiver. You didn't require waivers, you know, from a property over here in Middleborough or up here, 223 Meadow Street. here, 23 Meadow Street.
Right, I could see that's more than 600 feet away, so.
And, and you said those, those ones that didn't require the, the waivers, they were, they were well over 600 feet to 800 feet away?
Correct.
Yeah? Okay. And I, yeah, that, once that was explained, it, it, it made a lot of sense. I, I think everybody had a chance to, to look at the project, pretty much all the board So are there any questions by any of the board members? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion. Oh, so do we have, do we have conditions?
No, this could be continued to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm on the wrong one.
And if any board member had anything that they thought was missing, or, you know, they want to see additional information, if you could just send me an email, and then I could provide that information to all the board members.
All right.
Thank you.
And then we would be prepared for a decision for July 27th.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that has any comments, or has any questions? Well, seeing none, since there were only two, and they were related, we could close the public hearing tonight. To, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
The motion by Kevin Robinson, second by Cornelia Shea. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that was unanimous. Okay, so, next thing, next thing we'll vote on is, so, let's continue this public hearing to July 27th at 7:00 on the application of Galehead Development on zero Meadow Street. So I'd like to hear a motion, entertain a motion.
Cornelia Shea, so make that motion.
I'll second that.
So you have a second by Kevin Robinson. Further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that was unanimous, so this will be continued to July 27th. And then with that, we'll just go over the conditions.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And don't leave yet, we'll get the mylar to your-
Oh, that's right, yeah, we can, we can sign that mylar. Okay, we can sign, oh, this one underneath, we can sign after, or?
Yeah, we'll give the paper one, we'll just give them the five hours.
Okay. All right, next, we have a couple of sign, public hearings that have, that were continued to tonight from our last meeting. The first one, it's the number eight on the agenda, is the application of Brewery 44, requesting a special permit pursuant to section 3500, 5300, and 3570 of the copper zoning bylaw that's located at Tubantello Street in Carver. And this is to exceed the signage dimensional requirements in the highway commercial district. And this is for discussion and possible vote. I know we talked about this at our last meeting, and, and I, we, I think we requested the owners of Brewery 44 to, to come in and see us tonight and talk about their, their business. And, and since then, I've, I've seen that you're in the, in the copper paper.
Yep.
I've seen both of your pictures there, and, and they talked about the brewery. So I'd be happy to, if you give us your names and addresses, we'll-
Mike Johnson, 20 Odomani Street, Kingston, Massachusetts.
Jameson Wright, Plimpton, Massachusetts, 75 Upland Road.
Oh, good evening, gentlemen. I think the discussion was, we saw, we saw, we saw your sign application, and, and then we saw the signs were already up. And, which, you know, I can understand, the, the way things are going, you know, sometimes that's missed. I know we have some new members here, they were, you know, wanted to know why those signs were up, but on my 10 or 12 years that I've been on the board, I've, I've seen this happen all the time. And, but it's, so it's, it's good to see you come in and, and talk about it anyway. And we certainly like to hear about the brewery. If you could just tell us what's going on.
With the brewery itself, or with the sign, or?
Ah, with the, we'll, we'll do the sign, then we'll talk about the brewery afterwards.
Okay. So we put up a sign that replaced the former Tiki Kai sign. The sign that we put up is actually smaller than the sign that was previously up. We did install the sign because we had at the time a lift to our, that we could use that was on a short-term basis. So, you know, we figured, okay, well, it's a smaller sign than one that was previous, there shouldn't be any, any issues with that. And we used our, the equipment that we had for the short period of time to go ahead and install the sign. And then afterwards, we were informed that the sign did not meet the, the regulations, so we filled out the paperwork, sent the, the information, all went out to the abutters. And then we were told that there was a meeting, we weren't told that we actually had to be here for the meeting, and we actually also had a personal commitment at the same time. So, you know, our apologies for not, not attending the first meeting. We just honestly didn't know that we had to be here for that. We thought that, you know, everything was in, in the application, and, and so that's kind of where we are right now.
All right, well, thank you.
Excuse me. We did get a little excited when the sign came in six months ago. Everything lined up that day, so I figured I got the machine here, the screws are in it, and ready to go, so.
Okay.
Had I known, wouldn't have done it.
Yeah. Since then, I think both Jim and I have, have gone, we've gone to the site a couple times. Of course, I'm always there, going to the hardware store anyway. And so I've, I've, I saw the sign on the, on the directional, and I saw the sign on the building. And to me, you know, there are a lot of signs that we have that are, that are rather large, you know, starting from the CVS to Shaws down to the hardware store, and, and so I didn't think that that was anything unusual. And actually, I, I thought it looked good. So, so with having said that, I don't know if any of the planning board members have any, any questions?
Yes, the numbers are all over the place in this and don't really explain anything. What is the total amount of the sign on the building?
Seventy-four, 74 square?
It's a, I did a little calculation.
See, you guys, you guys squared it, and we didn't figure it that way, so I was-
It's 71.68 square feet.
Seventy-one? Okay.
And that's for the lettering and the bird.
Correct.
But that's also squaring off space that, it's the, the surface of the facade of the building. So, you know, say if it was on a rectangle or other shaped thing, it'd be much larger than that, but if you-
We also have the tan space adjacent to that sign too. So we proportioned it at that time when we discussed it, to fit that whole space. And we didn't know we had to be under a certain amount at that time when we did this, so. And they did the bird as an add-on, that wasn't actually in the original for us. He did that as a, like a gift for us, for the brewery. So we figured it looked good above the sign. If you look, it's a lot thinner than the lettering. It's not done the same, at the same time. It was gonna be inside.
All I, all I can say is, is that that particular building is a sideways building from the road.
Correct.
And, and, and your business is, is down towards the end, a little more difficult to see than the, say, like the hardware store that's much closer to the street. So, to me, that's an acceptable thing. I mean, just so that people could see your business.
Correct.
So.
What's the size of the street sign? Street sign is-
Yeah, street signs are six foot long and, I believe, 18 inches wide. They are, they, they match the exact size.
I believe they were like, it was 13 square feet each one.
Yeah, they, they match the exact-
But I don't know if you guys combined them both.
Yeah, they match the exact size of the, of the, of the signs that are currently up there.
The day we got them, Eat Fits put their sign in our spot, so we had to rewrite it and get a vertical one.
Yeah, we had to go vertical as opposed to horizontal.
If you look at it, we're the only ones that, there's no space top of all of them.
I get it, because it's a non-conforming pole sign, street sign.
Yeah.
And it was only at the time limited to the spaces within it. So that's, that's why I'm curious, because, because that kind of takes away from the whole sign, and now it's starting to be cluttered, and it's just kind of tacked up on the side rather than in one of the approved spaces for it also. And that's already been put up too.
Correct. Yeah, there was no, no other room for our, our space on there, so we had to go vertical.
With the last unit and-
Yep.
You'd have to redo the entire sign.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And the, the space that we're in is, have been sub, pretty much divided into two separate entities anyways. There's a restaurant that still operates that has nothing to do with us. So they-
Eat Fits.
Yeah, they have one that, they claimed the spot before us that day, that's what I'm saying, so. It was either us or them, they beat us to the brunt.
You have to put up a whole new sign.
That's something between you and your landlord, but-
Correct.
That where you have it now hasn't been approved in any way, shape, or form by the town.
We assume that whole thing was the sign already that was existing.
I don't know, I, I'm not sure if, I mean, what our bylaw says about a sign being vertical or horizontal, I don't know. To me, to me, after seeing all the old rusty signs and, on some of the old buildings and some of the places that we have, I think, just, just to see some nice new signs that is an improvement. I mean, but that's, that's my opinion. So I don't really see anything wrong with that, but that's, that's my thoughts on it anyway. Any other questions, comments?
Is it a restaurant too?
No, it's just a brewery. We make beer on, onsite.
Right, we do have food trucks on the weekends and entertainment, so.
It's not like a, it's not the barroom atmosphere that you get. Like the Tiki Kai, it's nothing like what that was.
Nothing will be.
No, we allow, families are in there, there's-
Families, dogs, everything. Yeah, this past weekend, we had two big events. We had, we had a local singer, and then we had a food truck, and then the next day, we had another local singer, and with the ages ranged anywhere between outside, probably 10 years old to 80 years old with, with the food truck and everyone.
You just had the Red Hat Society.
Yeah, we just had the Red Hat Society, and, and they average anywhere between 75 to 90 years old. So, yeah.
We need that town.
Is that, do you also do, bring your own food, or?
You can, yes.
Yep, when we don't have a food truck, we encourage you to bring your own food.
But you didn't bring any samples tonight.
No, we actually brewed beer all day today.
We did.
All right, any other questions?
Jim, do we know if all of the spaces are being used, are they actual businesses that are operating?
On, are you referring to that?
On this directory, on this directory, yeah.
Honestly, I didn't do a comparison, but we know Abashan's there, Eat Fits, Dunkin' Donuts, Plum of the Country, County Growers, we, that was done ways back, Hill Delight.
I believe, and they're still there too.
Yep, everybody is.
So everybody's, everybody's there that's on the sign.
Yes. Hills Insurance, they have a massive, they have like two, the middle part of the whole building.
HD Barber Shop, the Nail Salon.
The Nail Salon, the Tanning Salon.
Kevin, what I believe happened was they separated Eat Fits off the end of the building of Tiki Kai, and that left-
What was left, Oliver?
The front space.
That, that meant there was no-
Exactly.
Legitimate slot, so.
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of the way it looks either, except for the fact that there's, I can't see a, a place to put it.
I don't have a problem with the, the sign on the building. It's, I, I do have, I do have, I'm, I'm having difficulty with the other sign, that's-
But then you'd actually, I, I guess in order for them to make it horizontal instead of vertical, it actually would be the responsibility of the, the property owner.
It would be the property owner.
Yeah, then he would have to put a new, new directory sign.
Right, because at least either they have room on the sign for them or they don't.
Yeah.
And that's part of the-
Hmm, hmm. Well, yeah, all these places got subdivided, they, the stores got smaller, it's when they just divided them into different compartments, so then, yeah, you ended up, I guess, we've talked about it-
I agree, Conny, it's busy, it's just, it's difficult.
What are you gonna do? Yeah.
What do you do for them? And you just brought that up, that is a good point. Are all these places gonna start getting smaller, or are their directories are gonna get shrunk down, and then we're not, not gonna be room for them? And whose responsibility is it see to it that they're, you know?
I guess, yeah. I guess they would have to alter that sign somewhat, but I mean, that's not up to the, the people that rent the spaces, but, you know, they'd have to alter the sign somehow.
Roger, is, would it be, would it be the authority of this board to bring them in and tell them they need to-
We, we can't take that authority.
If they're gonna keep dividing up the properties to, that they need to update their sign?
Yeah. And, okay, yeah, we, we, I suppose, I don't know if you want to do it in this partic, particular application, but if it-
I was gonna say, would it be us, or would it be the zoning board that would come in and have, and have them choose the sign?
It'd be the building inspector, right?
It'd be the tenants that would, because if, if in their lease, it says they get a street sign, and they're not getting a street sign, that's breaking the agreement they have with the landlord, and that's an issue that they would have to handle. And then through whatever actions, force the building owner to come in and, and have the, the sign re, redone, or put in an application to redo the sign. I don't, we can't do it. All we could do is go down and take non-conforming signs down as a town, not as a planning board.
But the question is, is, is by doing it this way, a non-conforming thing? Is by having that particular directory sign up and down instead of horizontal, is that, I don't think it states that in the, yeah.
It's not that it's not non-conforming, but it just, it looks busy, it, you know, it-
Well, I thought the whole silo marketplace pole sign was, was non-conforming, that we've accepted that it was put up at, at a point in time before the laws were put into place, and this just makes it even further out of, into non-conforming territory. I think there's a barber pole hanging on the side of it too.
There is, yep.
Is there HD?
So it's, it's, it's really at its max.
Is there any chance that you guys have reached out to the owners and asked them if there's any other way other than that? I mean, I almost at this, at this point, I would think that they might have to take the silo marketplace out of there.
I just figured we'd be adding individual signs at some point if we- I just figured we'd be adding individual signs at some point if we did that. It could add eight more signs out front there. I think it's pretty busy already with Dunkin's.
I know this board wouldn't have eight signs out front.
There's a million signs out there.
The sticker signs in the ground, but not, not to this extent, you know?
No, no, I, I agree. Right. But I thought that silo was...
You don't have a place to, you don't have a place to advertise on this, on this directory.
And we did address that to the building owner. And he said, you guys could have the space to the left, so that's what we went with.
Yeah, he can't.
He, he doesn't have the authority to do that.
I didn't know that. But I also thought the silo sign was one big sign already.
Right.
And we were thin inside it.
Yeah, no, I, I could see that. And probably when you came in, Eat Fitz only came up to us a couple of months ago.
It's lit and everything, it's a lit sign.
Yeah, Eat Fitz was there just a couple of months prior to us.
They literally put their sign up the day we got us, that day. I went out to do it, couldn't do it. So we had to get the sideways sign instead. The guy did it for free for us, made us another one. I personally don't like it, but we needed it, 'cause nobody knew where we were.
Yeah, you can't, like I said, you can't see the Brewery Forty-four sign from the street because of the way the, the building is angled.
Right. Chairman wrote that up earlier.
Well, I think for the, the, the purpose of these gentlemen here, I think that, I mean, they've done all that they could. I, I think in the future, we may, you know, if anything else comes up with this place, we're gonna have to have, uh, a, a talk about redoing the directory sign if, if there's another business that comes in. But I don't think it's up to these gentlemen here to... They can't change the sign. I mean, they've done what they could do and, and what they were told to do by the owner, so, um... So I, so... Maybe, like I say, that's a discussion to have with the owner if something else comes up.
Can we make a motion to approve the building sign and separate it out from the silo sign?
Then what do you wanna do with the, the silo sign?
I, I don't believe it's appropriate or fitting within the bylaws of the town of Carver. And I, it's, next thing you know, it's gonna be split again, there's gonna be a sign on the other side, there's gonna be signs up and down, bumper stickers, floaters, everything. It's, I, I would prefer to separate the two signs and, in the vote rather than have to vote on it as a whole.
But what do you wanna do with the sign that's on the directory?
I, I, I don't feel that I can approve it at this time.
Should it's, yeah, but, uh, well, I mean, they're at, they, the, these people here are, are here because they have a new business and they need a sign up.
And I'm all for that, and I've...
And they've, they've done what they could do for it, uh, you know, they've talked to the owner.
I, I, yeah.
I don't know, Jim, what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, listen.
I mean, I mean, I just hate to, uh, to hurt a, a new business coming into town.
Well, I, I think that they, and no offense to you gentlemen.
It's not their fault.
It, that this, if, if you have an agreement with the landlord, it's up to you to enforce that agreement. It's not, not start sticking pins and holding places all over signs. This is, this is what we do. This is, this is where the buck stops. If we can't, we're, if we were to approve their, um, building sign, which is very nice by the way, that's at almost seventy-two square feet. And that's, as it is, they're, they're only allowed, what, ten percent of the frontage? Or sixteen square feet plus a sixteen square foot, foot sign? So the maximum amount of signage allowed on, on the property is thirty-two feet. So we're more than doubling what's available on the building. And I think it's, would behoove the board to, uh, um, call the landlord to account, not, not the town of Carver. This is, this is not the town of Carver, did not create this issue. This did not come for us. Our, our laws are pretty clear in regards to this. This is unfortunately an issue that they have to handle themselves. And we cannot take, dig a hole, uh, dig them out of this hole. This is not our hole to dig them out of. That's, that's something that they have to handle on their own in, in a business perspective.
I'm looking at this directory sign.
Mm-hmm.
It appears that you could, it'd be a kind of a narrower sign, put something below the Hills Insurance. Probably won't be optimal for the business.
We're talking about vertical and horizontal, it's all the same.
Probably below the Hills Insurance.
That's on the bottom?
Like, it, I don't know where they are, I don't have a picture.
That's a thought.
I didn't know.
Is that on the bottom, the Hills?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, our concern was, you get eight inches of snow and you can't see our sign anymore.
Yeah, it's gone.
Right. Or if they don't mow the lawn and it gets a little high, you can't see the sign anymore. So we have, we have no street visibility at all.
We've got a couple, uh, young sons, the owner. Get them out there and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the grass.
'Cause if, if Abashan closes, God forbid, and it's split up into two or three other businesses, then, then what? They, they start everywhere? I mean, where do we go from here? 'Cause...
Right, and I understand.
'Cause this isn't our issue to solve. This doesn't fit within what is supposed to be going on with the signs in this town.
Well, I'm not so sure about that. Does it say in the bylaw that you specifically can't put a sign where it's placed?
Um, I don't know if it specifically says that.
Yeah.
You know, part of that, you know. Part of it, you know, the discretionary aspect of the board. You know, I mean, I see the point, if you put it at the bottom, it'd be hard to see, you know, you know, horizontally. But it's, it's one of those things, um...
Marketplace might have to go, but, uh, you know, frankly, the sign was approved, the pole sign was approved because of its unique nature and...
When you say pole sign, are you referring to the barber shop sign?
Uh, no.
Or the directory sign?
The directory sign.
Okay.
I, I didn't, I don't even...
Maybe that's, that's a solution is that, you know, per minimum of Brewery Forty-four horizontal, maybe, um, I'm not sure if that top is painted or not, but, um, maybe it's up to the owner to make changes to the top.
Well, that was my suggestion.
Hmm.
Yep.
That underneath the silo or eliminate it.
Right.
To put their sign in.
So they can make the silo market use smaller font and then...
I appreciate the fact that they don't wanna cover it by hay and snow.
Yeah.
And I really do think that, uh, I really do think that, you know, the, um, owner went ahead and gave them permission to do something that isn't fit for what we, what our standards are.
Right, I'd be lobbying just to get rid of the word marketplace, paint the M and the E blue and...
Then you'd be on top.
Then you'd be on top. Top of the world.
At the same time, you know, the property doesn't understand it either, you know?
Right, we had, we did have this problem, Bruce.
Problems, we gotta work, pay for another sign.
If I were correctly looking at that, that's...
Those signs are...
Oh, yeah?
We had the kitchens and...
Oh.
Six hundred dollars a sign, it's another twelve hundred bucks.
Right.
Even easier to fix.
They keep the, did the company keep the horizontal sign?
No, I think they put it right over the other one, the Eat Fitz, put it over the one that was there.
No, but I mean, your sign, you, you said originally you had a horizontal sign.
For the Eat Fitz spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't produce that sign.
But we had to go to a vertical one, 'cause they already put it out.
We had to go to a vertical, right, those signs were, um...
We had to throw one out, our, two of them out already.
It was made in, uh, professional enhancing and they were on cheap.
Would you have that, would you change the look of this? Say if you had the opportunity to go horizontal.
Yeah.
Where the marketplace, would you change the look of that sign?
Would it say Brewery Forty-four?
It would say Brewery Forty-four.
Wait, 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 are we, wait, wait, so now you don't like the wording Brew Forty-four?
No, 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 he was just asking if, if that was...
Okay, okay.
If you changed, you know, if you would change the sign and, and made it kinda more similar to the sign that's on the face of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was just asking, would you, you know, make that change, you know?
I mean, we'd have to make it, we have to make it, but...
Right.
Look of what it is on the building, if you change it to a horizontal sign.
Right.
And then, maybe...
Would the, basically, I think, what he, what he...
I can't change anything that's on there other than mine.
Right, right, would the, would the font of what you've got right now be more agreeable to your entire name as opposed to a shortened version like what you have to deal with?
Right.
On the current sign?
That's, that's what we're looking at. Right, that's actually part of the branding. Uh, Brew Forty-four is, is, is part of our branding.
Okay, yep.
Right, it's, that's the, it's, it's called a lobster font, it's throughout everything that we do.
Right, right.
So how would we go about this? So you...
I would like to separate it into two because I, I don't think that they should take the chance of going, losing all signage. In order to...
Yeah, but, but you're, so you're saying now that you don't want the, the vertical sign in on the, uh, directory? You'd rather have a horizontal sign going over the marketplace where it says Silo Marketplace.
I just don't think...
Brew Forty-four over the marketplace.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that the vertical signs are inappropriate and it doesn't, doesn't fit and it doesn't work. And it shouldn't have been offered to them as an option, and we didn't do that. And again, if more business open up in there, what happens if Burger King opens up next to Dunkin' Donuts? Or, uh, again, more businesses and then what do they get? Start stapling and tacking signs up and things going everywhere?
So how do we go about this? I mean, these...
I, I'm offering you that, I would like to, to separate it in...
Well, I know, but how do we solve the problem of, of, of what we got here?
It's not ours, it's not ours to solve.
Right there.
It's not our issue to solve.
So what do you...
I think one, one thing to do is, okay, take a vote on, on the sign that's on the, on the building.
On the building, okay.
Okay, and then the next step would be, um, you know, um, allow them to withdraw without any prejudice on the vertical sign so that they can come back at a future time. And I would say not charge them any fees or anything like that.
Right.
Have them go and work with the property owner to see if they can create a slot for a horizontal sign.
I would be more than willing to so make that motion.
So that, that way, they can move on, their current sign is blessed. And then, you know, you know, come back, um, you know, hopefully with a plan. Just, you know, I think, it just, have to communicate with the, you know, the property owners, hey, look, you know, the plane board is not accepting of the vertical signs on the, you know, freestanding sign or the frame there. So, uh, they would like to see like, uh, at the top of the, um, at the top of the sign.
Okay. And you know what they can do? They can do it, you can do it daily, I might be a little bit of a pan and neck, but you can put out one of those, um, one of those signs that would have Brew Forty-four right on it, that waved in the wind.
Yeah, they call them a foldable sign, yeah.
And as long as it comes in each day, you're allowed to put it out there daily. Um, that's, that's given that, that's given that, you know, we, we decide we can't accept this. But I'm just, these are just things I'm thinking of. I mean, I appreciate, um, what Jim said about, um, retracting with prejudice, uh, without prejudice and then considering not, um, charging them for the sign.
Right.
Where they're already...
Not charging again to come back before...
I, I don't know if you can understand this, but it, it looks like it's just tacked on there. It doesn't look, it...
That's because, like I said, we didn't have that choice when we went to put out. We had signs made, I actually lit, threw them in my dumpster, I had to throw them away, I owned them. It was twelve hundred dollars for two signs. I had to scrap them in panic and get two verticals, 'cause we were opening soon. So I put them up, I asked, you think it's okay to the owner? He said, it's great. I figured the whole thing as a whole was the sign, 'cause it's Silo Marketplace. And we were putting something within sign, it, yeah, it doesn't look great, but we did it to get it out there so people knew where they were going.
I, I appreciate that.
It wasn't like, you know, if I could've changed the world, I would've totally not gone with that.
No, I, I fully, I fully understand, right. It was Eat Fitz came in and, and opened up a separate, and that was, that was problematic.
All right, so, uh, so what do we, so we, we can do this. Do you wanna do this tonight or do you wanna do it at a next meeting?
I, I would...
Uh, with, you know, with the conditions, right, so you can write up some conditions for this?
Well, I would just go ahead, I would approve, um, the wall sign at seventy-one point six square, square feet. And then, you know, with power of emotions, discussing the fact that we want them to come back at a future time so they can withdraw the request for the, um, what is now the, uh, directory sign, uh, twenty-seven point three-three square feet. So they can come, go, go to their landlord and see if they can work out a, a reasonable solution, you know, to...
They could make the sign horizontal.
Right.
Without them having to take the sign down, 'cause you can still allow them to keep the sign up at this point?
You, you could do that, just to keep it until they come back for the, the next hearing, you know?
But it's not a permanent, but it doesn't have to be a permanent structure.
If we can...
I mean, they still have to advertise, they still have to...
Yeah, no, I get that, so maybe we give them a sixty-day grace period.
But it's making a point, they just can't go ahead and put a sign up and then, um, expect, you know?
So maybe...
Yeah, we could put a time limit.
Just because it's there.
Maybe a sixty-day grace period to sort things out or...
Well, I don't wanna see them lose any advertisement. And they've already been, they, they, you know, they lost the opportunity with Eat Fitz. You know, they've gone and lost a sign. So, I don't know, we're, we're trying to come up with ideas to you for something that should not have happened. And, and we know it wasn't your fault, but it also got done without us.
Correct.
Being able to advise you and direct you in which way to go.
And just to point out, usually the directory signs are, um, are special permits, a separate special permit by the, uh, whoever owns the, the, the marketplace, the, um, ah, what do you call it, shopping center?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, usually whoever owns the shopping center goes in and they get a special permit strictly for the, um, directory sign. And then the, uh, app, you know, the, uh, tenants of the property then get the ones for the storefront. So I think it would have to, the, um, you know, whoever owns the marketplace would also have to kinda come in. But my recommendation was, is that, um, you know, we would go ahead, approve the wall sign that's already up. And then allow them to withdraw without prejudice the, um, what do we call it?
The sign on the directory, yeah, okay.
And then allow them to come back without any expense, um, at a future meeting, um, to do that. And in the meantime, they can still use the vertical sign until such time the, the board, uh, they come back before the board.
And what, we have to come up with a reasonable amount of time? I mean, two years is...
Right, well, you know, I've said something to the...
A year down, right.
Right, I'll, I'll leave that to the board.
And that's...
Been there, what, six months?
No.
We, we've only been open for five weeks.
Oh, okay.
This'll be our sixth week.
Yeah.
How long's the sign been there?
That sign was put up, what?
May, early May.
Yeah, it was a few months ago.
We opened up Memorial Day weekend.
Thirty, sixty, so now you...
Do you have a decent relationship with the, the owner?
We do, they're just not local, so it's tough.
We do, and, and again, no, they're gonna have to redesign the whole sign, so, I mean, it's, it's something that we'll have to work with.
Where does the, where, where's the owner?
I think he's, I don't know, Norton or Taunton or...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, he's not out of state. Like out of state.
No, I just, we don't communicate all the time.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes.
I guess there, there's a new family member that don't, that's running it now, so the old one...
So they might not have been familiar with...
Yes, that's where I think some of the problem lies.
Yep.
But...
Would you, would it be in order to make a motion to approve the building sign?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the building sign as, um, applied for.
A second.
And, okay, so we, we'll have that, um, we, we could make the whole thing in one...
I think we need, so, I think we need a couple of different motions on, out of the...
Okay, we can do it that way too, I suppose, okay. So we have a motion to approve the, the wall sign over the business.
I'd say in the amount of, I'll just use a rough number, seventy-two square feet.
Okay.
So that people are aware, you know, the bird plus the lettering, uh, for a total of seventy-two square feet.
Okay.
I will so amend my emotion, my motion.
Okay, to, to the amount of seventy-two square feet, okay. So you, uh, Carney Shea made the motion, John Gatsky second for discussion, seeing none. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so that it was unanimous. Okay, so then now we go to the, the portion of, uh, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um... Okay, so then now we go to the portion of, so I'll entertain a motion to, how are we going to, so-
Leader's-
For the, for the directory sign to allow the vertical Brew forty-four to continue to be on the directory sign until the owners of Brew forty-four can contact the owners of Silo Marketplace to put the Brew forty-four horizontally on the sign. And so we'll allow that for ninety days with an opportunity to, for an extension if need be.
Can we simplify that? Because one of the things we want to make sure is that-
Sure.
We get in the piece about being withdrawn without prejudice so that-
Oh, yeah, I forgot that, yeah.
Maybe we allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice the application for the directory sign of twenty-seven point three-three square feet that is currently mounted vertically on the directory sign.
They have to, they would have to be interested, willing in withdrawing.
Well, right, but that'd be the suggested motion to allow them to withdraw. And then, and then the other part of that was give the applicants ninety days to work out an agreement with the owner of the Silo Marketplace for a horizontal sign on the directory.
We'd have to ask the applicants if they'd be willing or interested in withdrawing their application for the directory sign.
Yeah, we'll withdraw at this point.
Okay.
So-
Quick question for you as far as for grace period timeline that we're looking at. About how long does it take? Did it take you guys to get those-
First one was like about ninety days to have made. So, but we'll have to figure what it's going to take. I'm going to have to bring my architect in and measure. Because I got to ask all the tenants to move all their stuff too. I can't just-
That's not your job.
I know.
Right.
It kind of is though. I got to facilitate it.
Right, but you may not have to move it all, but, you know, if you use some room at the top.
I thought it was a landmark of Cava there too, so I didn't want a deer to touch that, you know.
I mean, if they could just place your sign over the lettering marketplace, you know, and just keep the silo. Or they could put silo, they could put marketplace at the bottom.
Hey, I'm just winging it.
So-
And don't forget about the banner that you can have, you know what I mean, the banner that you can put out daily.
For ninety days. You can have a sandwich board out there too.
Yeah, if they allow us to do that.
Yeah, I know.
But that scraps that one that we made, but-
Right, right, well, right.
It is what it is at this point.
And I think that the timeframe is-
So as long as we keep it within that, we'd be okay.
Well, pretty much the same.
You know, same size as what they have everybody else.
Yeah, get rid of the marketplace and have-
Oh, just keep it within the linear.
Right, so you'd be given ninety days to negotiate with the landlord. And then you would come back to the planning board to get whatever was-
Approval, yeah.
Approved by the landlord to get approved by-
Yeah, it could be good too.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Sorry to give you this hurdle, but, but you know, it was confusing even for me to read it when I went by because it's up and down. I go, you know, so, you know.
So it's not doing you any-
It's a minor hurdle. It's just-
You came to us before you put the signs up.
Nope, I totally agree with that. There's a lot of things going on at the time.
Would I make a motion to allow temporarily for the next ninety days to continue to use the vertical sign until an agreement can be reached with the owner of the property? At that point, you can come back and without being charged processing fees again.
Thank you.
We need the first motion to allow it to withdraw first.
Oh, we need to make a motion to, oh, okay, I didn't realize that. So I will make a motion to allow the applicants to withdraw their-
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes.
The application for the-
I will make a motion to allow the applicants to withdraw without prejudice the directory signs as applied for.
Okay. So a motion second by John Gatske. Any further discussion? Okay. Do we have to put the time period in there also with that?
That would be the next motion.
You said that at the beginning?
No, that would be-
Oh, the next one? Okay, we can do it that. Okay, okay, so we have a motion second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so-
This motion, I would like to make a motion to allow the vertical directory sign to remain in place for the next ninety days until an agreement can be reached with the owner of the property. Is that?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Yep.
I would also allow that we could do thirty-day continuances if at that point in time it hasn't come to fruition.
Okay.
Sir?
Okay, so we have a motion by Carney Lee Shea, second by John Gatske. Further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right, well, thank you. Sorry to have to put you over this-
No.
Last hurdle, but-
People already know you're there anyway.
They'll know.
And don't forget that banner. They can get that banner made, you know.
Yeah, we don't want to get too tacky out there, but-
Okay.
I'm just saying, that's anything that's going to help you for advertising.
Right, correct, correct. We'll figure it all out. We'll get it. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, God. All right. So, okay, next, the last hearing is on the application of R.W. Bryant Contracting, Inc. Requesting a special permit pursuant to sections thirty-five hundred, fifty-three hundred, and thirty-five seventy of the Cava zoning bylaw. And this property is located at three eighteen Tremont Street in Cava. And it's for a sign to exceed the signage dimensional requirements in the industrial aid district. And we started this hearing at our, at our last meeting. So this has been continued and I think, but the board was looking for was a reduction in the size of the sign on the, on the building. I think everybody agreed that the sign in the street was okay. To my memory, anyway. And so it was just the sign on the building.
So you had asked me-
Give us your name and-
Susan Fitzgerald, Kingston Sanarama.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, in your packet, include a copy of the decision plus the new sign proposal.
So is this new proposed sign roughly the equivalent of the size of the street sign?
One is and one isn't. So they were hoping for a little bit bigger aesthetically, so I, we included that. Are there two there? Do you have two sizes?
Oh, yes, I see.
Yeah, option three, which is what they, that's what you had asked for. And option two, which is a hundred and forty-four inches wide, because it's just a better fit for the building. The other one's just small. So just to give you a scale, we did the rib, each rib is twelve inches on the building. And you had asked for the top of the peak to the, bottom of the peak to the top of the canopy. So that's in there too.
It stays below, it stays below the-
Oh, in the roof line. That's right. You want it to be below the roof line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
And both of them are.
Yeah, I mean, option two. I don't see a problem with option two.
I like option three, but, so the maximum allowed square footage is thirty-two square feet in this particular zone. And you're asking for twenty-six for the street sign alone? Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
And what size is option two on this? I don't see it on the-
Twelve, two, twelve, is twelve foot by, say sixty-five foot, so sixty. Under sixty, but close.
Sixty, sixty square feet.
I should have figured that out, I didn't.
What's option three?
Option three is the same as the street sign.
How much was, what size was the one on the building originally that you came to us at the last?
The ginormous one, yeah. That was, that was a hundred and ninety-two inches wide by seventy-seven high.
So a hundred and ninety-two, so you roughly made it fifty inches less in width.
Would it be a problem that they left the size on the building on the first page and went with the eight foot on the second page for the sign outside?
I'm sorry.
For the, the directory, we'd consider directory. Yeah, what's more important? Are you looking for the directory to be, the directory sign to be eight feet? Or are you looking for it to be twelve feet? Because-
Well, what we had discussed before was that was a safety issue.
Yeah.
You know, for trucks turning in, so they could see it from a distance.
Yeah.
I mean, for the building side, they want them both. That's why I'm here. You know, aesthetically, it just looks, it fits better. I mean, almost we could split the difference.
Well, what I'm saying is, what if, what if we considered the fact that if you went with the eight-foot directory but kept the size of the one that's on the building? Because I understand the size of the one in the building, going with, I guess if it's option two, it does look considerably small.
Yeah.
You know?
And that's the same size as the, as the street sign. They're both, that would be, they're both four by eight.
Option, option three is the same size as the-
Yes, yes.
Option three is the same, yeah.
Yeah. What were you talking about, two?
I believe you-
But two doesn't, I don't think two looks too small, do you?
No.
See, no, two.
It's, it's- See, you're allowed thirty-two square feet, so you're putting us in an awful position asking for-
Yeah, but, but this is a-
Yeah, this is a special permit, yeah.
This is a special permit.
Yeah.
Very special.
Doesn't mean it's through the roof, right? It's not anything goes. It's not a free-for-all. We still have to maintain some semblance of-
Well, but that's why we brought the options.
Yeah, right. And just, just to kind of go back, so I found my notes from the previous meeting. So the initial wall sign was proposed at one hundred two point six-six square feet. The current wall sign is now at fifty-seven point seven-five square feet. And then the freestanding, the previously was twenty-six point six-six square feet. So, and then-
So is the freestanding sign going to stay the same size?
The which one?
The freestanding sign?
Yeah, that you guys said it was okay last time. We're basically here for the building sign as I, you know.
Right, right.
I find, I just, I find it difficult to go so far over what the town generally allows of thirty-two square feet.
But it's such a large building and you can take into the ten percent, you can take into the ten percent.
The ten percent only goes up to sixteen feet as a maximum.
There's also another building too.
No, it, yeah, the thirty-two square feet is the maximum allowed.
Well, she brought the side, she did bring it down.
She did bring it down, yeah.
Does it matter that there's an additional building too, that is not getting signage? Does that count as frontage?
It's still the same commercial property.
Same, same property, yeah.
Is that, is that second building also part of Bryant too?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, just, just for me, I'm going down that highway, people are doing fifty miles an hour. You do have the directory sign, but, you know, it's nice to have a sign on a building that you can see, see quickly. I mean, I don't think that that's outrageous, number two. I just, I just don't see it. I could see that number three to me is a bit small if you're cruising down the highway.
You're saying that, but it's, it's the same size as the street sign, as the directory sign.
But it's, yeah.
It's larger. It's actually larger.
It's larger than the directory sign. The directory sign is almost encompassing the full amount allowed without a special permit. That's, that's what I'm saying is, which, which one is the most important? Personally, I think the street sign is most important, but-
It is. It's the first thing you're going to see really.
Right, and then you're going to pull in and then you're going to see this. And that's more of an aesthetic thing is what you're claiming and not so much as a necessity to jar in business. I don't, I don't think, you probably don't get a lot of foot traffic at a cable construction business in general. And that road's forty-five miles an hour. I kind of lean towards minimalization and restating, because why even have the laws if we're just going to let anybody that wants to have, have whatever they want to? Then what's the purpose of actually trying to provide guidelines and bylaws?
Well, I think in a commercial area like this, I think it's, you don't think you have to really be that strict about that. I think if you're, you know, like at the Silo Marketplace or something like that, that's maybe a little bit more important. But, but anyway, how does that, anybody else feel? What do you think? Do you like the larger, number, choice number two or choice number three?
I like two.
You like two.
Now, is two going with, is two going with the eight-foot sign, directory?
The directory is going to stay the same as the original directory, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's the one that's what, twenty-six square?
So I just don't want to be confused with what I'm voting on here, because option two's got a twelve-foot wide sign.
Now, do we, we didn't vote on the directory sign, did we?
No, we didn't.
Yeah, so we haven't voted on either one of these, okay.
So we would be going-
It's twenty-six, twenty-six point six square feet. I don't know if I have this.
For the directory sign.
For the directory, the street sign.
Right, but you have two different sizes here.
Do we want to go ahead and-
For the building sign?
That's the building sign.
No, I'm talking about the directory.
The directory is-
I'm just making it really simple. Is the directory going to be twelve feet long or eight feet long? I think, I think we come to the point where eight feet is going to be good so that's not dangerous out there.
Actually, don't even have my proof with me. What do you have when you're on the street sign?
I'd be happy to bring it.
Thank you.
What's confusing me is that this would be fine to go back.
Oh, you don't, but that's not the street sign either. There is another one. Let that go. You must have in your packet. I must have left it at work.
So you understand what I'm saying?
There's something else.
This is agreeable.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different, do you have it? Yeah, there it is.
Because this is the street sign.
And so that's why this looks so huge.
Oh, okay. Yeah, see now-
Yeah, different. These are individual letters too.
If you had this, and you see it like this, that's acceptable. So that's what's throwing me off.
Okay, so, but that's what this is going to look like on the building. This is pretty much the same size.
Maybe Connie needs to see that because I understand where he's coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like ninety inches by forty inches.
So which one?
Well, so she has something different, but we would be going with this, with this look, with this size.
Yeah.
I got it here.
Yeah, that's what I was-
So the problem is, is we don't have all the information, so this is what we, this was what we made separate.
Yeah, so that's twenty-
Square feet, right?
So this is the one.
So what does that say?
What does it say?
It says ninety-six by forty, which would make it almost twenty-
That's why, that's why I wanted to clarify that, why I was confused.
Forty, okay.
Option two on the building with the eight foot.
That's perfect, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so the-
Did Connie see what you-
So it's eight feet.
Connie, did you see what Jim, Jim had?
I, yeah, I sure, I-
Oh, so you guys have different-
You were there at the last meeting.
I was at the last meeting. No, the last one was, the last one was big.
It was big, yeah. It was long, ten o'clock at night.
The one Jim gave us.
Yeah.
Not a new Jim gave us.
No, it was long.
Yeah, so-
No, it was long. You were done when I left.
Actually, both signs will be pretty much the same. They're gonna be ninety-six inches wide.
If you go with option three.
If we go with option.
If you go with option three.
Which you might not be able to read from the road.
And I would be fine with that.
Too small.
And I, I would even be fine with, uh, if, if you went up a little bit, and ninety-six by forty-eight to make it a little easier on the building, but.
Well, in the middle would be one-twenty wide, so instead of twelve, we would go ten feet. So you've got eight or twelve for the building. Option two is twelve, feet one forty-four, and option three is eight. So what if we went ten?
I meant eight feet. Did I say nine feet? I thought, I said ninety-six inches.
You did say ninety-six inches.
That's eight feet, right?
Yeah.
I, I did, I did know that.
So would you be willing to split the difference between two and three? Ten feet would be a hundred and twenty inches about?
Oh, me? Yeah, I'll split the difference between two and three. I'm just trying to keep it from, you know, it's just get a lot of big signs.
Okay, so, so if we, so if it's a hundred and forty-four, ninety-six, so you're, you're saying make it ten feet?
One-twenty, yeah.
So make it one-twenty.
Yeah, and whatever that scales out to be, so it would probably be around forty-five maybe high? I don't know, we'll scale it, but one-twenty.
That's okay. It'll be roughly the, it'll be a little bit larger than the directory.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would look a little bit larger.
Yeah, and that would give him about, uh, fifty-seven square feet, fifty-eight square feet, which is, that's well within my agreeable levels.
So it's almost allowing for double.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It'll work.
So one, so one-twenty wide, and then what's the height?
It will scale up and it's gonna be, like, I'm gonna say like forty-four, forty-five inches. That's what I'm thinking, cause you've got.
So say forty-five, I mean, I just want to put something in the decision.
If it's ten feet, if it's ten feet by four feet, it's gonna be forty square feet.
Did you see square footage?
There isn't, it's not figured out, no.
What I've been, what I've been calculating. So, the, the street sign is.
It'll be an approximate forty-eight, yeah.
About forty-eight, okay.
That's fine with me, yeah. I'd be.
So you could do up to that or, or a little less?
Yeah, we'll scale the height to the width of one-twenty.
Okay.
I think they'll be happy with that. That's fair.
Option two and a half.
Exactly, right, right.
So one-twenty by forty-five inches.
I said forty-eight.
Seven point five.
You can't include that in the, you can't put two and a half on the sign.
You're no fun.
That's forty-five. She said forty-eight, one-twenty by forty-eight.
Okay, hold it, um.
I'm sorry.
So I got, so I took the one-twenty by forty-five inches, came out with thirty-seven point five square feet. Is that?
Can you put an ish?
I would say no greater, I would say to go no greater than the forty, than forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
Limit it to forty-eight inches.
Oh, forty-eight inches.
Well, cause he has to scale it.
Yeah, one-twenty by forty-eight, yeah.
So we do everything in square footage, so.
No greater than forty square foot.
So, that would be forty square feet.
So forty square feet max?
Yeah.
All right, so forty square feet max.
And that'll give us.
And that's where the walls.
Well, I mean, is that gonna, is that gonna scale correctly?
It scales the way it scales. So if we take the, you know, you say you have twelve, twelve feet and you do it down to ten?
Right, right, right.
It shrinks, whatever.
Um, what, um, hold on a second, what's the?
I don't think it's gonna be exactly forty-eight, but I don't know what it's gonna be.
When you say forty-eight, you mean forty.
I was just gonna say that thing.
High, yes.
So, fifty-seven.
Yeah, but that's why they're saying up to forty square feet, so.
Yeah, we can make it work. We can make that work. That's not a problem.
Forty-eight square inches, yeah.
I think we're gonna have to go to forty-five.
Well, no, if we give her up to forty-eight, it gives her.
Oh, up to forty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, that'll give her, it should give her room to work with, right?
Yeah.
Up to forty-eight gives her forty square feet.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I actually think it's.
On the building.
You guys can get home early tonight.
So.
You can get home early. When I left here last time, I said you guys don't get paid enough. That's a lot.
Just so we know, so one-twenty by forty-eight is what we're looking for?
One-twenty by forty-eight, not to be any bigger than whatever that square footage is, one-twenty by forty-eight, or so.
The building sign, and then the, the street sign is.
Forty by ninety-six.
Forty by ninety-six. That'd be the, uh.
What, and whatever square footage that is.
That, you know, if you say forty by ninety-six, that could, if we want one-twenty, that could be closer to fifty, honestly, height-wise. If you think about it.
Yeah, I was, I'm.
Is that what you're thinking?
No, it's different because, uh, there's no phone numbers and there's no other assorted.
Info.
Right, there's no address.
We agree that we didn't want a big huge thing sticking out in the middle of.
Right, you're just going with the logo.
Section of the road get hit either.
Yeah, it's gonna be up, away from the road.
It won't have fiber optic specialist XXXX.
And those are individual letters on the building. So we can kind of compact them if we have to.
On the, no, it doesn't, doesn't show them on the building. Just shows the logo. I, regardless, I think we're getting into the weeds. But I would.
All right, so.
Can I make a motion?
I, I just want to be clear on it, cause I gotta make changes to the decision. So, freestanding sign not to exceed forty by ninety-six.
Yes.
Forty-eight by ninety-six.
No, freestanding was forty.
Was forty by ninety-six.
Freestanding, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Not to exceed.
And it's, it's super hard.
Forty by ninety-six, forty-five ninety-six.
Yeah.
And we'll put those in inches.
Yes, inches, yep.
Yep, and then, uh, the wall sign, uh, not to exceed one-twenty.
By forty-eight.
Feed one-twenty by forty-eight. All right, so I'll have to make changes to that once we get the motion. Sorry about that.
That's all right, so. I'll make a, a motion to accept the sign on those, um, figures. That, do you want me to say the whole thing out? Have you got it? All right.
Second.
Say, motion by Kevin Robinson, uh, second by John Gatski. Any further discussion? I think, and these were supposed to, uh, these aren't lit, right?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, so, I, yeah, I guess that, that will do it. Uh, and, and the conditions?
Uh, well, the only condition really was that once the, um.
Needs a building permit, right?
Yeah, once the, um, yeah, they gotta fill up, uh, do a new building permit, but basically the condition is prior to issuing a sort of building permit, a true copy recorded decision is registered, plenty kind of registered, these are these submitted to the planning department, so, we have to make changes to the, get signatures, then it gets filed with the town clerk for the twenty-day appeal period.
Okay.
And then, uh, once the appeal period's over, then you're good to.
Who's signatures?
I need the planning board's signatures, but, uh, cause we made changes, unless planning board members are okay with signing the paperwork, and then I can make the changes later and then send it to you, or, or we could.
I trust you, Jim.
Sure about that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
We're weak right there.
And, uh, so let's, uh, let's vote. Um, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, I think we finally got it straightened out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for, for coming here the second time.
Forty-four, whatever.
Is this a paper copy?
This is the Galehead Plan. It seemed to be, I got five, I need six.
I, I didn't have it.
Is that the, this one? No, I'm looking for the Galehead A and R Plan.
I saw Connie roll it up and put it in her backpack.
Yeah, good, I mean, the stack I have, you know?
She's gonna take it home and smoke it.
What is this? Probably the best I didn't hear that.
I've lost.
It is best you didn't.
It's a cheese and chocolate.
Somehow.
This is paper, right? I signed in pen?
Uh, yep, I'll sign it.
All right, so, um, somehow I've lost my agenda. Does anybody have a spare agenda that I can follow?
I think it said to adjourn.
Sure, no, no, okay.
I think we gotta.
We got lots of reports.
So we just, okay, okay, we got, um, so uh, planning board member notes. Oh, uh, I get, I know one planning board's member's already come and asked me for some time, but, um, this, the, before we go on to him, the discussion of vacation times and possible cancellation, do you want to talk about that first? Of August tenth planning board meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, wait.
Yeah, so, uh, I believe you said you're gonna be.
I'm, I'm not gonna be here, uh, August tenth.
Yeah. To be honest, I wouldn't mind having a week off, so.
And I won't be here, I think it's the twenty-third. That one didn't come through me, cause I signed five, one, two, three, four.
Oh, that, that must be the six one now.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you want to sign, I'll, I'll sign him after. So, uh.
Thank you, sir.
So, uh, yeah, so I won't be here the tenth, so Jim was, you wanted to take the tenth and bring that, have our next meeting in August on the twenty-fourth?
Yep, I believe that's the case, that's the second.
So, uh, is anybody, uh, else? Is anybody gonna be out on the twenty-fourth of, uh, August?
I believe that was my, uh, vacation week, but I have to check, and, uh, there we go.
Anybody? So, uh.
I will not be here from twenty-first through the twenty-eighth.
Anybody else taken any time off? So that means that if we did it the twenty-fourth, we're gonna miss, uh, Mr. Shea will not be with us. You can do it, um,
can we split the difference?
Remotely by phone, we've done that if.
I can try. We've, we've done that before. Reception, unless you want to schedule it for the seventeenth.
So if anyone submitted an application for a public hearing, we couldn't do it the seventeenth.
Oh, I haven't seen some of those.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if, Jim, if it makes it.
If we needed it, I guess we'll do it for the seventeenth.
If it makes it. If it makes it easier on you, I'll, I can, I'll, I'll find some way to make the twenty-fourth.
He seems like a good egg.
Um, so have we come to a decision yet, or?
Sure.
Uh, Wes, I'm just gonna say whatever is easiest for you is, is fine with me. So the, the twenty-fourth, if that's the best for Jim, then, then that works for me. I'll make it work.
Well, the only concern I have is if someone wanted to file for a public hearing, um, if we did it on the seventeenth, I don't think we have time right now to do anything, um, but.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see, I see what you're saying, yeah.
The applicant, but.
No, that's, that's fine, I, I understand, cause you gotta get it out in the public notice.
You know, we could find a six one, really.
Let's see what we got here.
All right, so, so we'll just do the twenty-fourth then, and then uh, August twenty-fourth will, after, see, we have July twenty-seventh will be our next planning board meeting, July twenty-seventh. And then we'll go to August twenty-fourth as our next planning board meeting.
It may turn out we won't, we may not get an application for August twenty-fourth for a opening of public hearing, but I just, that was the only concern, was that if we get an application for a public hearing, uh, that would be the first date that could get. Would be in August, that, that August meeting.
They wouldn't have accidentally taken the sixth one.
All right.
Accidentally?
No, no, I mean the.
Oh, no, we only gave them the Mylar, so maybe they only gave us five. Get another, make a, make a print from the, uh, from the Mylar, with the signatures on it.
All right, so I have, did that answer your question, Jim?
Okay, so we're gonna cancel the, the August tenth meeting?
Yes.
Cancel that, and we'll still schedule the August twenty-fourth. And if it looks like we're gonna have a light agenda, then we can possibly just even cancel that.
Okay. All right. And I think, uh, John Gatski, uh, asked me if he could, uh, say something tonight. Thanks, John.
All good?
Ready when you are, sir.
All righty, all right.
All ears.
Uh, just a per, public service announcement for, um, everybody who's, uh, paying attention out there on YouTube. We got, um, the DEP is offering up free testing for, uh, a compound called PFAS. Um, it's a very, uh, it's an emerging contaminant, um, that is, uh, it's a pretty, uh, it's, it's one of those chemicals that never breaks down, uh, and can, uh, and collects up in, in, uh, drinking water and's, could be pretty, uh, significantly dangerous as far as, uh, cancer and things like that. Like I said, uh, DEP is offering up free testing, um, and then, uh, if your well is, uh, if your well or water source turns out to be contaminated, they will help with the mitigation to at least finding the source, um, uh, to, uh, of the contamination, and then, um, from there, um, help you, uh, figure out ways to mitigate the, um, the water. But the testing itself is, is free. Uh, all you gotta do is con, contact the DEP, um, Angela Gallagher, uh, with the local DEP, uh, is the person to get in touch with, and they will send you out a free kit, uh, to, uh, fill out for the water samples, and, uh, they'll come and pick it up and do all the testing, and then they'll send you an email with the, uh, with the results.
Uh, what office is she out of? She out of Lakeville, is that right?
She's at the Lakeville, uh, DEP.
Her name again?
Angela Gallagher. I know they've been, they've been trying to get the word out for, for quite some time, so just trying to help get that word out.
And what is that contaminant?
Um, it's, uh, essentially Teflon. It's essentially Teflon. If you've seen the movie, or if you've heard of the movie Dark Waters, that's a, it was something that was, that ended up in the water out of, out in West Virginia, Ohio Valley area, and so it's, that's, that's where it's originated from.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I think there was something in the Carver reported too about free testing of water for the Carver residents, and I think it was connected to what John's talking about. Yeah, so it was also, it wasn't in this week, so it was in last week or the week before, maybe, so, and that's available, I believe, to, to all Carver residents, yeah.
I did get an index card in the mail from the Mass DEP and UMass Amherst, who I think they're running in conjunction with.
Yeah, yeah, I think UMass is the one that's doing the testing itself.
All right, thank you, John.
We've talked about this, we call it cancer and COVID.
Yeah.
Well, that's not so, but according to my research, it, it, there isn't an abnormally high. But anyway, that, that's not for the planning board, but, but, anybody else? Okay, planning director notes.
I'm all set.
Okay, so we have the minutes of six twenty-two, twenty-one before us to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that motion.
Say, motion by Kevin Robinson, second by Cornelius Shea. Further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our next meeting date is the twenty-seventh of July, I believe. We've gone over this. Yeah, July twenty-seventh will be our next meeting date. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to adjourn.
And Ellen Sidell's second, those in favor?
Aye.
Did it first?
Aye.
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 All right, and so, good night, everyone, thank you.